Access. Sis. You're late. Okay, evening. This is 5:00 PM. This is the regular meeting of the Central Target. Order of Supervisors, please go in need and recite.
Either one of us. I've been asked to say it's for better. And to follow up with what you said. What I can. Really, you don't tell them that at all.
Thank you very much. I was present including myself, chair James Pride. I share out of well in mind, I'm here with the person. Supervisor Brian Barrett is on with us via Zoom. Engineer John Tressler is here. Solicitor Ron Karasak is excused for the evening. And our township manager, Delia Havelgaes, is also here. Do not have any announcements this evening, but first order of consideration. For the minutes of July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three meet uh meeting. Do I hear a motion?
May I say something?
You have to see a motion and a second on the floor. Any comments?
Motion to approve.
Second, motion by Mr. Eleven Time Second by myself. Any questions or comments?
Any comments? I understand you talked to John Burke number?
I personally, it was so definitely period.
Did you talk to John Burke? He said he talked to John Burke number about the judge that was the dollar?
As we said, uh yeah, so so we connected with um. Uh it wasn't John Burke number. I overthought would be uh current president of Mohammed Head of.
Yeah, that's the one that's probably fine.
So so there's their foundation is attracted from their foundation. So we present their foundation as well.
Now, don't you say it was the property about the name first?
No, there's not no characteristic.
So. And now the paragraph you wrote about it, why we didn't use an asterisk, you're all right? It's nothing. It isn't true.
Well, I'm sorry, man. That's the truth that I remembered.
Uh wooden decks, party. Yeah, it put us on the shelf.
Wooden deck? What are you talking?
You're saying that the things that I wanted to do that you put on wooden platform. And you couldn't put it there because it's in a flood plain. And you didn't want to take up parking.
I I said the following. I said that I thought it was a good idea.
Well, what you wrote down?
I still do this. If you remember, I was the one who went out looking for other uh sources. To get the dinosaur slide or whatever it was done cheaper. I couldn't find it. The one that you found, I think, was thirty-five thousand dollars. Then there was dinosaur eggs and got that. And then there was the fact that we'd have to build a a. What do you call it? A a.
Platform.
Play area for and a play area with anything like that. You have to have a floor that's either driven engineer wood.
I can rubber.
Or made of something that will uh protect children that they fall from getting concussions. All of that costs a lot of money, plus the park isn't a flood plain or floodway, I shouldn't say. There was no place to put it. It costs too much, and that's why I never would.
Well, you wanted to do your part, but you brought a whole thing there. It does not make sense.
But that never happened.
If you, but you probably.
It's not made of next. Are the references that I mentioned?
Yeah, break it down, right?
Which? Comment number nine A.
Well, I don't know. You really tell me how I'll have a super notice.
Under section of GATB twenty-one, I admit it's not so eligible to be released under federal money. Thank you.
Yeah, I think what I've said here is pretty accurate.
It's all wrong. It's all right. I just want to say that. Bye.
All right, any other comments? All in favor?
Uh.
Hi. Supervisor Barrett, you you gonna pass your vote?
I'll recuse myself.
On what grounds? Were you absent? Don't think so. You were not.
You don't think so, what?
Well, you you aren't absent, so I'm wondering why you're recusing yourself from the minutes. You you can vote no, but you have to have a a reason to refuse yourself.
He's involved in it.
All supervisors, voting. All right, hearing done now, we're gonna proceed. We don't have any public hearings or plans to act on this evening. By way of solicitors report, we have one item on the agenda, a temporary construction and permanent easement agreement for Airs to approve. Which is part of the consent agenda at the solicitor's request. He is excused for the evening, so we don't have any formal report on that, so then we will consider engineers report.
Uh I have nothing else to report this evening, sir.
Oh, that's a simple. And in terms of considering a consent agenda, we have three items on there. Um all of which are in the normal realm of what we be doing. Do you hear a motion on a consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Which one? At eleven time second by myself. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, Ryan?
I'm here.
And your vote on the consent agenda?
On the what?
Your consent agenda? Item nine A.
Yeah, I know. I know. I'm. Uh. Okay. Just a couple of questions. Uh before we sit budget sessions, shouldn't we have our audit in the hand?
I mean, that that wasn't pre- requisite before. We're talking about the budget meeting dates. Later on, we'll look at the authorization to advertise those dates.
Okay, all right. No problem.
All right, is that a yes? Is we need to have a miss whether or not you you vote for yes. It was.
I'm having trouble uh understanding you, Jacob. I don't know why. But uh you're coming in kind of garbled. On my phone.
Well, I'm asking what your vote was on the consent agenda that we just talked about. Was it a yes?
Okay. I'm okay with that. Yes, A.
Oh, all right. Uh next, right before we do suburban, just because it'll be a little quicker this way. I'm gonna invite Todd Morano from Poken Mountain Way to discuss. Our presenter from Organizing Network. Todd is a fantastic resource community, and he's here in front of us. Todd, thank you for coming today.
Thank you for having me. They're all really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Fair.
I give them that graphic as well. And then all there's three documents I'd like to make. Well, first, let me tell you, United Way, some of what we do in three words, we hope. And specifically, we work to help people who are above the poverty line. But are still struggling to make ends meet. The true to this population is ALS. ALS is an acronym. It stands for Asset Limited, Income Constrained, but Employed. So they don't have much. They don't make much, but they are working. They are paying taxes. Uh these are the folks who are bedlocked or economy, the ones that serve as food, that clean up after in hotels. The ones who work in the grocery stores, convenience stores, that kind of thing. Um if you refer to the first page in the left. There's a a couple of columns here. These columns in the blue, they come from United Way of Pennsylvania's annual, by annual ALS reports. This is the update. This is based on two thousand twenty-one data. And if you recall in two thousand twenty-one, there were a lot of pandemic era assistance uh put into place. There were stimulus checks, there were special tax breaks and things. These numbers are actually deflated compared to current. But still, if you if you find some of the townships or scroll over, you'll see that thirty-one percent of the residents of this township fall in ALS population. It's almost one out of three. And you are one of the the better counties in that sense, some are counties, municipalities. Some municipalities are as high as this fifty plus. Um but still, we're talking one out of three people. We're struggling to make ends meet. There are literally one catastrophe, one broken arm, one transmission. Uh you know, one busted tire away from making hard choices. Um. So we have spoken about United Way, provide several services to design for these folks. And and the columns on the on the right there in orange. Um are huge highlights of programs that are are focused on this population. Now, we tried to break down the data as best we could by municipality. Unfortunately, zip code is kind of our best method, so until we we figure out the GIS and things, these are estimated numbers. Um but the first column, Pokeno Info, this is an information referral service we provided in the county for almost seventeen years. If you read the county strategic plan, it specifically mentions Pokeno Info. As being something that we should support as a community. Uh I've included a a working copy. This is still a Microsoft publisher, so you're getting to see hot off the breath here, the data. Now, the data themselves are active. Uh it's just that the layout is still a work in progress. But you'll see that this year we serve six thousand one hundred fifty-five people here in Longo County, just with that service alone. Um you look, uh we have a Vaya back return program, and Lucas, uh one of your own, he ran that program for a couple of years. He can tell you a lot more about it than me. Um we're expanding that this year, and essentially what that does is that helps uh folks uh with lower incomes get free tax assistance and through that are able to get tax refunds over the buck they've probably gotten alone. Uh while Lucas was still here, we got, well, two hundred eight thousand year last year. This past year, we had a hundred eighty-eight thousand. We are now making that a full year round project. We expect you to be able to get three hundred thousand, forty thousand, and this is federal dollars, state dollars, and back into our accounting. Uh early child screenings, uh I I can tell you more about that. We conducted three thousand three hundred screenings. These are for pre-K kids, so parents are better equipped to identify issues and get them fixed before they get into school. Uh eviction mediation, we try to help people stay in their homes, make landlords home by getting rent payments. Um and again, these are just four of our services. If you look at our fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, we do not have the numbers yet for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. We serve fifteen thousand five hundred twenty-four people here in the county. Uh that's one out of twelve people, about nine percent of Longo County. Um so you can take a look at the Pokeno Info Annual Report. It breaks things down. Quickly, if you flip the this chart over to the back. We have uh different uh family configurations and what United Way of Pennsylvania just defined as the survival budget. This is the minimum it takes to get by. And if you look at that first line of rent, I don't know who's getting six hundred dollars in rent anymore in Longo County, but that's the survival budget. That's renting a room from a friend. That's couch surfing, that kind of thing. So a single adult needs to make fourteen dollars and fifty-four cents just to survive. Uh scroll all the way over to the right, two seniors need to make twenty-five dollars now. That's fifty thousand a year. And if you look at two adults in childcare, seventy thousand dollars a year they need to make. Um that that's a tough, it's it's a tough gig sometimes for a lot of families. In fact, about any right this, based on these data, it's about thirty-four percent are ALS. Traditionally, and probably where we are now is closer to forty-three percent as a county. Uh and you can also see in the orange table there, uh different classifications of people. So you look at single female, head of household, with children, seventy-one percent of our county fall in that ALS range. That's a lot of single moms out there who are really, really struggling. So that's 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 the situation. Um but we do everything we can, and we pride ourselves on on being both a direct service provider and an investor in the community. We help. This year, we just um funded fifteen programs in thirteen agencies for our traditional investment process. Also, our health RFA helped fund three programs by three additional agencies. So you add that up, it's forty-four programs, seventeen agencies. Thirty dollars comes to us is is really getting spread across the community. We're reaching out to all these townships and boroughs and asking for you to consider adding us as a line of your budget for two dollars per household per year to help cover the costs of some of these programs. And that's the letter you'll find on the left-hand side, signed by myself and our CEO, Michael Preeba. Um is based on two thousand twenty-one data from this report. Whatever number works for you, whatever your current household assessment is, we just ask that you consider two dollars per household per year as your support of Poken Mountain United Way. Anyone have any questions? Trying to be as quickly possible, but still uh.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you. I know we did talk a lot about this before, and certainly we talked about ALS a lot. Um this is great. I know that we made a contribution every year, every year, or the past year.
Uh.
Yeah, this year. So certainly, I hope that we're going to continue that that habit.
Absolutely.
Uh yeah, thank you for coming to present this. Any questions around?
I know it's just a wonderful, exciting, very good. Yeah, and then I have, I have records on there. You can read the full report and things. There's there's a lot of data out there. And we want to dialogue, but if you go off to the funding, we're here to help, we're here to provide resources. I have ten copies here, a paper flyer. Uh you can put the post offices, community centers, library, um you know, to get the word out. And whether you need to get help or give up, about ten percent of our call of people who want to volunteer, they have firms to donate. Uh so it's really, it's a it's a it's a large service for the community.
Thank you, Senator.
I appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming out. It depends if we're getting the most fun. I find my wires here.
And then the wires feel uh a piece go, and we set it down, this is what feels to be like, so. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
See you when we talk soon.
Yeah, absolutely.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Right. So we'll certainly, our budget discussion there is coming up soon. Further on uh other presentations, uh thanks for wanting to hear from Suburban EMS and the K D ones who present to us also.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jeff Young, executive director of Suburban. Uh we spoke here a bit earlier now. Uh I want to take a moment for Ben Lucas for all the help with working with Brian. I'm trying to come up with a proper way to present what we're looking for. I brought with me tonight uh Brian Donat, who is a worker finance and work riser of Jerrica operation. Um. Sorry, Don. Don, over there in the way, Don, you're in this government world of relations and U A, U I. And uh we're having some compliance. Um and I wanted to tonight, it's gonna it's gonna be a little bit different than last time. Um I'm gonna have Brian, uh Brian do the presentation. Um you'll see here, if I start talking too much tonight, there's gonna be coughing bones. I'm not gonna do that. I'm not sick. If something else happens. So I'm gonna let Brian do the a lot of the talking. I'll also be picking in and everyone else here uh will be uh taken into. Okay? Hey. Thanks, Dan. Uh you can go over that. Uh so again, this is um everybody there. Jeff just introduced our positions within the organization. Next slide. So uh this is the slide here we're talking about just EMS and some of the things that you know from route. This presentation, we're all prepared to address uh besides some other things. Uh which include the cost of readiness, uh the lack of funding within the industry. Uh the low cost reimbursement and also the workforce crisis that that regained specifically to EMS. Uh this is right here. It's gonna kind of assertive, typical content here for the presentation. Uh we're gonna go through current state of revenues, expenses, uh expense reduction efforts that we do. Uh threats to our retention. Uh planning for the future and then touch on response times. And then the last part here is uh kind of go over the calculation of the question. That I mean, you know, to Lucas and it will present it to you in this town. As far as uh disposal for Smithfield Township, we supply the emergency services through Suburban. Uh this is a quick overview. I know uh we did, it's our under presentation. As you know, we service two towns. We offer in Monro, and we're standing throughout those locations. We have four stations. Uh service nineteen minutes value. We have twenty-three EMS vehicles that are complete uh this year, actually, with over like seventy-eight gear in service. Uh we service two hundred and thirty square miles. We've covered a hundred and approximately a hundred and twenty-four thousand residents. Now again, that is just residents within municipalities that we service. That doesn't even begin to uh talk about the huge influx of tourists that occur. Especially up here in Monroe, more than what happens. Okay, so our first state of our revenue, uh this is the kind of idea layout of it. Seventy-five to eighty percent of our patients are were being reimbursed for them through a mandated payment model, which basically is Medicaid, uh Medicare, workers' comp, auto insurance, any uh contractually stipulated uh amounts. Uh the federal government, they basically tell us what we can get for our services. It doesn't matter how much we we say we want to charge. They have uh they have certain amounts for certain services that don't pay through Medicare. And it's very similar through the state program of Medicaid. They set the rates. Doesn't matter how much it costs, I mean, for what we'd like to charge. We get paid what they legislation tells us. Uh fifteen to twenty percent of our patients have commercial insurance. Uh both had a network insured. Uh if someone receiving care from us, they have a network. The payment in order to pay us, a lot of times will be sent to the patient. And you you know, as human nature with some people, they don't forward that check on it. They just keep it. So uh there's lots of revenue there. And then uh five percent of our patients are self-paid or uninsured or uninsured, they can't be covered by the patient. Uh for instance, there's the Medicare Advantage plans that have a pretty hefty deductible or copay within them. And uh you know, unfortunately, some seniors just aren't able to afford that. So uh they're they're billed us a lot of pay. Uh this is a bill of worth gain. So again, regardless of our rates, generally, the amounts that we collect are capped by federal, state agencies and third-party insurance companies. Uh this one right here showed uh some data here on dispatch versus what we can bill for. So for instance, there's non-viable services that we still have to come forward, such as fire calls, false alarm activations, the medical alarm. Uh and also just, you know, Google calls, litesses, things like that that we cannot charge for. So you'll see the green area throughout the years there, twenty twenty-one and twenty-two are the amounts that we were able to bill for. And and basically the hollow box there, excuse you, the total reach out is the actual ones that we were dispatched on, and the difference there is what we've been not billed for. So even though we may be responding, it's not, I mean, it doesn't mean that we're gonna get paid that we can't charge for. Current state of our expenses. The one I had previously mentioned was the cost of readiness. So um pretty much what it sounds like is it's the cost of maintaining our service in order to be ready to respond to an emergency or or a call. EMS statute and regulations and common requirements in EMS, you can see his staff uh unit twenty-four, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. So regardless of the activity, you know, one or two calls in a day, which in reality we don't, but you know, if we were only that two calls in a day, we would still have to be ready twenty-four hour period every day. Staff, ambulances, between calls, sit in a sleep and waiting for a call and returning. A loaded phone call or transport only generate costs, so obviously we can't bill for returning that phone call. And as we're just sitting there. So obviously we can't build for returning that phone call and average of sitting there. But obviously, employees are still being paid utility, there's still many users in the station, the station is still being utilized. And also we have additional fuel costs if it's an unloaded trip. And then uh, Jeff, the general there, so within Monroe County. We lose approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars every emergency run that we go on. Now that's the difference between how much it costs us versus our average reimbursement for a nine-one-one call. So essentially by providing the service of an nine-one-one agency, we're losing every time we respond to a nine-one-one.
What other county do you operate in?
Both.
Is uh, is there any reimbursement that are you get?
So as far as the permanent value. So we, we do receive some very small amounts from some municipalities. But it's only um, I believe, four of them, four of them, and it's, it's right around forty thousand and that's, that's all.
We are, the Monroe County received nothing.
The county itself, from the county itself, correct. We don't, we don't listen to anything except if we apply for like grants or something like that.
Yeah, five hundred plus. I don't know. I'm sure the others maybe get it.
Yeah, yeah, so do they. You know, it's greatly appreciated, but you know, it's right, exactly, exactly.
We're about to send out a letter to all the communities we serve, asking them to participate in helping us. All the way across both counties. It's just, it's becoming a need. Um, it's not a want anymore, it's a need.
Awesome. Specific items here, we're seeing cost increase is uh, cost to remain competitive with employees. Um, obviously, everybody knows that employee wages are increasing ever since the pandemic. Plus there's, um, you know, especially down in our southern uh, area. We deal a lot with warehouses and things like that, trying to be competitive. So um, you know, that is just a constant thing that seems like it's evolved and you know, week to week, month to month, as far as that goes. Uh, increased cost of gas, maybe you all know how crazy gas costs, and we're essentially using gas twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Uh, increased cost of repair maintenance on most of our buildings, our vehicles, uh, the cost of vehicles themselves and the cost of medical supplies. Uh, here's some graphs and these are, so these are costs specifically associated with our Monroe Division. Um, and this shows over the course of twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, our total annual cost of gas. So you can see there, uh, in twenty twenty, we were approximately thirty-four thousand, twenty twenty-one sixty-two. And then last year it jumped up to ninety-seven, almost right under the hundred thousand dollar mark. Uh, paramedics on vehicles, again, um, we saw they jumped there between twenty and twenty-one. Uh, we've been able to kind of keep that flat from twenty-one to twenty-two. Um, but again, you know, making necessary repairs as needed and everything, but obviously just parts and labor and everything like that costs more now. Uh, this next slide is really telling. Um, obviously we can't provide our services without ambulances. And here is some historical cost data on the price of our ambulances. In twenty eighteen, it was a hundred and three thousand, point, hundred and eight, twenty twenty-two, hundred and thirteen. And we see a gradual say, you can find the price that you can, you know, expect over time, but then in one-year timeframe, it jumps to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So that's the average cost and honestly, every quarter, the price of an ambulance is going up. So um, you know, obviously, the sooner we can, you know. Put some money down on that ambulance and beneficial, because like I said, if you pull up the prices going up and also bear in mind that this is the cost of just the ambulance. So that doesn't include the decal that we need to put on the side of it. It doesn't include the power, uh, power stretcher. You know, you're usually talking a hundred and fifty to sixty thousand dollars on top. This is actually making an operational expense. So expensive reduction measures that we, that we take, um, try to renegotiate contracts when they are practical. Um, we purchase through CoStar, which is a third-party CoStar. Uh, whenever possible, in order to try to get the uh. In contracted uh, prices that are generally large. Uh, we have cooperative agreements with certain value, fuel cost. Uh, this is more in our uh, southern uh, division, in our Hampton County. But uh, if any miss, any miss valued, we'd like to uh, assist them in that, in that any, in that way, you know, we're always open to it. Uh, we have a lean management structure. Um, as you can see, the individuals that are here right now pretty much make up. The administrative staff with the exception of a couple of the people, but um, in our office down in Easton. But a-again, you know, we don't have a, a large number of administrative staff, you know, we, we try to keep that as long as we can. And we do a frequent analysis of our practices to ensure that we're optimizing uh, our processes and our purchasing and things like that. In order to help offset a lot of our expenses and go outside of the traditional revenue aspect of it, we do. Uh, donations, our annual donations in the Monroe Division are about nineteen thousand. And this year, we actually started, uh, we sent out uh, mailings to businesses that are within our coverage area in North and South. You know, we, we did receive some back, you know, the first year, um, we did get some donations out of it, but again, this is our first year that we started it. And then our major thing is our golf tournament. Every year we do an annual golf tournament. And it's our largest source of funding throughout the year. And the next slide actually shows you a little bit of our, um, basically what we've netted out of it. Uh, in twenty nineteen, we had twenty-nine thousand, twenty twenty-one, uh, we didn't do one in twenty twenty, obviously because of COVID. Uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, almost twenty-seven thousand, and then we really made a jump in twenty twenty-two to uh, thirty-three and a half thousand and a couple hundred dollars on this year. So it, it, like I said, it is our, um, our one and only actual fundraising event, but it does bring in money for a, for a one-day event. Uh, threats for our retention. Again, I kind of touched on some of this, especially with the way wages are now, uh, warehouses, you know, I've heard. Um, to a certain degree competitive and uh, fast food is obviously trying to stay competitive. Um, gig jobs, you know, what you say is kind of like Uber, Lyft, Drop Hub, things like that, people think they're. Um, and providers are leading the industry and whether it's, you know, because of COVID. But now, you know, there's other opportunities out there that people see not fit in this field that they might want to pursue. And um, you know, obviously, minimum, minimum wage rate increase is also a factor. So planning for the future. Um, we have, and for past four years, we have had an in-house education program, which uh, is, is very good. We've got the force enough to have this in place in our Bangers Station. So we can take, um, average, we normally have the means to go through an E M T course. We hire them, uh, we pay them, we put them on staff, and then we put them through the E M T course. And then set them up basically to then go take their exam, pass hopefully, and then they become E M Ts when they're already on staff. And then we uh, shortly are going to be starting our program for A E M Ts. So that's basically advanced. E M T and it's kind of an intermediary level between a paramedic and E M T. They can be more than a standard E M T. But not quite everything a paramedic can do, but it allows somebody that opportunity. Uh, so then also, uh, we are trying to establish our employees a clear career path. So obviously I mentioned on that E M T program that we have, anyone that's, you know, interested in advancing from the E M T can pursue the A E M T. Or we actually offer assistance with the tuition through the paramedic course. Um, so we do offer our employees a career track. So specifically for Smithfield Township, so response time, uh, you're asked for that. Our, our Monroe Division Station is located at the very end of First Union Street, very kind of, put like a Google map that you can kind of see in the one we're writing. For your reference, it's the giant Walmart. So we're right over here for a brief. Uh, our regular staffing is uh, two ALS and two D O S during the day, one ALS at night and two D O S. Now this next slide here, just to give you some reference, uh, and some context, these times are Google map times. So you know, um, obviously, our ambulance is driving a little faster, it can cut some of this down. Also, this is from our station. So a lot of times, the ambulance may get a call for something, maybe they're at the hospital and that's closer than our station. Maybe they're on a different call in, um, you know, it could be middle Smithfield, could be, you know, the outskirts of East Stroudberg or something that's coming directly from. So you know, these times are, are relative, but you know. Don't take them as guaranteed times because the time, you know, they could be different, you know, whether we're closer or what have you. Um, but basically from our station to the Smithfield Gateway Area is ten minutes. Uh, to the Route two oh nine circle, it's fourteen minutes. Shawnee in, it's fifteen minutes and then the intersection of four oh two and two oh nine is fifteen minutes. Just to uh, provide some context, uh, as far as disability support and other EMS agencies. Uh, down in our Hampton County, Bethlehem Volunteer, our company which has an EMS service is funded by Bethlehem Township and Lower Nazareth. Uh, Bethlehem City EMS is funded by the city of Bethlehem. Um, in Monroe County, Pokonan Regional is funded by the municipality's day service, which is Uba, Mount Open Borough, Barrett, Paradise, Mechanic, and those that you have. They, they all provide municipal support and funding. And then, um, which I'm sure you, you're probably familiar with, is the Lehman Pike ALS, which is funded by Lehman Township and the agreement that they have with Cal. So now specifically for Smithfield, just to let you know how we kind of came up with this. We factored in our Monroe Division, we took the factors of revenue, fundraising, other income. Expenses and invited that up amongst all municipalities, which we serve based on resident population and call. So for Smithfield Township, eighteen percent of all the population that we serve in Monroe County, the larger municipality. And the number of calls that this area has within, based on twenty twenty-two data, it's fifteen percent of all of our, uh, not one call, over the course of the year. So then this last slide here basically due to a breakdown of what I had explained with our Monroe Division and how the, the average of eighteen to fifteen percent. Across the board, our revenue and expenses and then show that the. The um, the deficit that goes along with those percentages based on activity and population. Would be eighteen thousand, uh, five hundred and ninety-five dollars, fifty cents. So that is our proposal to Smithfield Township. The annual contribution for our services covers the municipality of eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, which monthly would be six thousand, eight hundred and one hundred and thirty dollars. And then that's, yeah, if anybody has any questions for myself or, or anybody else.
Lucas, do you have anything you want to call off?
Yeah, I, 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 I think we're going to go through the whole, all the people list real quick. Uh, I did want to ask, uh, Gary, I moved Gary often from the control center, I moved him down the hall. Um, I just wanted to ask you more thoughts on the uh, response times and, and all that and how you feel with the uh, that role. Gary, I'm gonna ask the, I'm moving.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, I, I, unfortunately, I, I believe this is, this is not just a Monroe County problem, Smithfield Township problem. This is becoming a problem uh, across our region and across Commonwealth. Unfortunately, as, as an elected official myself, don't realize the necessity for fire department or EMS service. Until you have a catastrophic event, a house fire, car fire, or one of your family members experiencing uh, pain. But I think, I think the municipality needs to sit down and figure out what, what level of service. I, I'm not clear yet what uh, Suburban is proposing. Are you proposing B L S, basic life support? A L S or the new uh, advanced E M T? And I know you, you touched on that a little bit. I can tell you, I did reach out to the Department of Health and uh, I'm reaching out also to Lancaster County nine-one-one because they are, they have an active. Advanced E M T program and it requires a little bit of difference in questioning uh, the caller and what those dispatch, dispatch protocols are. And you folks from Suburban could probably know better than I do, but I was told by our council, EMS council that. Uh, an A M, A M T, advanced E M T carries about thirty percent of the medications that a regular paramedic would carry. Is that about right, guys?
Don't believe it's that drastic, but it is a problem.
Okay, so then Smithfield, I think in any municipality, you need to think what level of care do you want for your community? Uh, you know, if money was not an object, A L S coverage twenty-four seven for every call, but that's not, that's really not practical, I don't believe. You can't, you couldn't staff, even if the municipalities formed their own EMS organization similar to what Lehman did. You couldn't, it wouldn't be cost-effective to staff for an A L S truck uh, for every call. Now, we're working with another uh, Monroe County EMS agency, specifically Pokonan Mountain Regional EMS. Where they're going to start running a medic unit, a truck supervisor who will respond with their B L S on an A L S call. And then the paramedic would jump onboard the B L S truck. What that does is it gets your advanced life care, but it also uh, it prevents, you know, running two full ambulances dual call. When in a lot of cases, it's not necessary. But I mean, that's, that's what I'm seeing and hearing so far.
Gary, you're talking about a, a chase truck, right?
Exactly, yes.
And, and, and Gary, I moved, uh, probably wrong, I moved the presentation now, we're, we're looking at. Uh, from this other station would be two ALS during today, two D O S during the day, one ALS at night, uh, after, one. Right, essentially, Smithfield Township would be getting the coverage of everything that's operating out of our Monroe Station. So like I said, there are two ALS, three D O S during the day, one ALS and a D O S at night.
Sometimes there, sometimes we have a chase truck on to it. Yeah, we have a chase truck that resides its travel.
Yeah, and I would think, I'm not an am, I'm not in the ambulance business, but I would think a chase truck is probably a lot less expensive to purchase than, than a full-blown ambulance. When you talk about sixty thousand dollars just to outfit that ambulance. But just to talk about response time for a second, response, response times are affected by the obvious. They're affected by weather, they're affected by traffic conditions, and Monroe County is well versed on traffic. Uh, and distance to the actual location of where that patient or call is located. If it's, if it's downtown Shawnee, or if it's, you know, uh, by the circle going into Marshalls Creek, that's one thing. But if it's up in the hinterlands of some of these developments, it's obviously going to take that ambulance crew a little bit to get there, and that's understandable. Um, what I mentioned to Lucas was, we could, uh, depending upon what, what you do, what your desires are. We could offer that, we would provide you a monthly report with response times. And if anything looks out of the ordinary, I could highlight that for you and then the municipality could go then contact that EMS provider. Essentially ask them, you know, what, what happened or what took them so long.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to throw in here, this point is, we uh, we already provide ALS and D O S to Smithfield. On an as-needed basis. Um, and uh, these response times are where we already have. Uh, it's, it's reality now, the Whiskers not available, we have to step up or step in. And we all feel for each other at times. There's times that we're out and they get down there or, or, or she's out and we come up here. So it's already happened. Suburban's already in this area.
Clear. I, I agree wholeheartedly and you know, it's not, I'm, I'm sure we could find several calls where people were just busy. Nobody goes out of service, nobody. It's just that they're busy more calls than what we have resources for. And that does not mean any ambulance service is bad or deficient. It is just the way it is. We're dealing with a, what, a hundred and ninety thousand population roughly and two. And two weeks ago, we doubled that population, uh, in Talcanic Township with the NASCAR race and everything else going on, so. There's only so many resources to go around, it's, it's how you maximize those resources to get them out to the people. One thing, uh, no different than with Bushkill. But you'll have a quick turnaround time because you're going to go ninety percent of the time right to Pocono and become available right away. You won't have to traverse halfway across the county to get to the, the respective hospital and then come back to the jurisdiction, so. Turnaround time to Pocono is pretty quick now, St. Luke's, you know, it's just a little bit further, that needs consideration, that's.
Gary, you're, you're one of the most expert on this, uh, I'm just curious. Do you know, uh, anywhere in the country where, um, these same problems have been solved, uh. Innovative by some municipality, there anything that stands out that's. It's, uh, dealing with what we're dealing with, but is, you know, sort of, uh, met.
I mean, to pick one municipality, I can't say, but, uh, Lehman is a, is a, is a beginning. Uh, moreover, Pocono Mountain Regional, what's that, five or six municipalities that formed their, their own? Organization, it's run by the municipality, it's governed by the municipality, it's controlled by the municipal officials, so. I mean, that is as close to home, I think is what we're going to get.
For Lehman's, uh, is partially subsidized by Pike County, right?
Yeah, they're, none of our, none of our, uh, ambulance services from my knowledge are subsidized by the Monroe County Commissioners. Directly, you know, they get nothing for payroll or any of those things.
Lehman is in Pike, it doesn't Pike subsidize.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear that.
I, I was saying Lehman is in Pike, isn't Pike, uh, offering some sort of subsidy to local, uh, municipalities? For, um, emergency services?
When I think about what Pike did, if I recall, they, they allocated so much, so much, uh, dollars or mils. But the municipality had a notch that, I mean. Mike Dwyer, you, you'd probably know, I know you're in the audience, I don't know what the specifics are, but that's kind of what they did. Uh, will that happen here? I can't tell you, I don't, I, I don't necessarily would bet on it, but, uh, you know, it's hard to say.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yes, Pike County. The county actually matches any municipality up to two mils. So that's countywide for them.
Right.
What's that?
Maybe we should move our township to Pike County.
That's true, I mean, I, I think it's, we're, we're willing to do some sort of, get a tax by, by this fall or this. I don't have any further questions on suburban, I know that, you know, for myself and my colleagues, anyway, just with data from them and, and. Talk to Gary probably a lot more, talk to my neighbors.
Um, yeah, my, my question, so you guys right now are two, two ALS, two BLS during the day, one one at night.
Minimum.
So this, so this eighty-two thousand is zero additional coverage, you're not adding an extra ambulance?
No. No.
So that's, that's all the times are just like any other ambulance in the county. When they're out, it feels out of luck, you don't have an ambulance for your area because it's in Stroudberg where the majority of all does.
So, uh, let me address what you're saying, we have minimum to, how many did you have on today? I for, I forgot to introduce Operations Manager Justin Bonds before, how many, how many trucks did we have on today?
Three ALS, one BLS.
So we had four trucks on today. But, I mean, with that, that they're stated minimum, so it allows us flexibility. Now, some of the trucks, one of those, how many did they transport, one of those trucks, or two? How many did transport?
Well, that's all day long.
Yeah, they, they'll cycle through.
You might drop down to one ambulance at noon and I haven't given a day.
And the other thing too, like Jeff said earlier, he said, we're already servicing Smithfield Township and we're already backfilling Bushville. So in twenty twenty-two, the number of actual emergency calls that occurred within. Smithfield Township that were dispatched by the nine one one center. We did a third of all the calls, now obviously we didn't have a full primary, so we weren't at least the first one called. But we already did without having a full coverage of the county, a third of all the nine one one calls.
This is very roughly, data just assumes. You just take on the rest of the, the tension that you currently have the primary in.
To try to fill in. What maybe in some people's mind, we're operating at deficit right now.
Right.
We have to stop it and the only way we can stop disaster, we, um, we can't figure out.
And that exists in a world where anyone's primary, right, I mean, like. You're, you're primary for a third of us right now, they're primary for two thirds of us right now. There's no option in which there isn't some need for assistance on both ends, right, that's what you're. Yeah.
I'm sorry, who said that? They, oh, thank you, good, so both of us on both.
Yeah, that EMS is all unfortunately, that EMS is completely overdone. Yeah. There's plenty simple like Robert and Matt before is, you know, is there something going on in the country yet? You have to raise taxes and pay, that's, and, and, nobody wants to hear it, but that's the end of it.
Oh, this was already solved in every major city in the country, correct?
Like, like, yeah.
A hundred years ago.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, that's.
Uh, G, Jerry, I have one more question for you, uh, just, uh, if, if. Uh, we, we've got a proposal right now, uh, from suburban, uh, with the. You have any, uh. Barrels with that, with that proposal or, um, does it? Sound reasonable as, as, I, I know we, we talked about some other things with, um. If our phone times were, were as well, we could have that truck department township or something like that, but, but ignoring that for the moment is. Just, does anything else that, that enough you?
Just, but Gary, before you, saying, I mean, I would just say, maybe this question is probably better suited for the next joint session with. Those Smithfield two at the table, which is, again. I mean.
I don't know that there will be another joint session at this moment, maybe there, uh, there are no more scheduled joint sessions at, at this moment, and.
Well, I think we need to get an interest, right, I mean, you guys are game, are you fine?
Uh, yeah, I mean, quite honestly, that's why I'm here, sort of.
Yeah.
Sort of. At a loss here why. We went from a joint meeting and we had followers from that meeting. Uh, that we were going to re, we were going to reconvene and then all of a sudden now it's divide and conquer, I'm not sure.
We're not dividing, we're just.
I think you're right, yeah.
No, they, they.
No, it is correct. Uh, admittedly. All right, well, I mean, you're trying to divide, that's wrong. We are not trying to divide and conquer. Okay. Um, there, there is a total. Different set of issues with Middle Smithfield. If we, if we total within the middle Smithfield, we will have to add eight full-time physicians on the minimum. I can't promise Mike and his board that right now, and, uh, we're working towards it, um. But we don't have enough staff to, to promise that right now and we're working towards it with, uh. Operations is focused with our training program that we might get, we should get there by the, uh, mid, mid February of next year. That's the goal, we did let them know, and Mike, I don't know if you saw it, it just came out today. And we didn't, we didn't come out so late, we cannot leave, uh, we did let them know that. We're not trying to divide and conquer, uh, we work, but look, look us very, very openly about, uh, what we're facing with the two. I would love to say right now, I, I could offer the two now, but to be fair, because if we're not able to get out, have to find with them. It seems a choice, yeah, now, because, and we don't, we don't want to do that.
But we're, we're, we're looking at, uh. There's no joint offer for the, 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 the ALS, ALS coverage. Right, it's just, it's just.
Because like Jeff said, you know, maybe we just want to offer and not make promises we can't fulfill at this time. And to build what you presented today, of course, from your state area.
Correct, by the time we get done doing the contract, if you even with decide, it's going to take a little bit, once we get the lawyers involved. We'll probably start approaching end of the year, January.
I, I have a question, Lucas.
Yeah.
My question is, will suburban reciprocate with other ambulance services? If, uh, they would come in to take a call on their behalf. Uh, specifically like reimbursement for ALS service or supplies or any of those issues that we've talked about in the past that.
Um, Gary, I'm sure, are you talking about ALS, BLS splits?
Yeah, in other words, if, if an ambulance, another person's E, uh, ALS would come in to assist you. They're, they're not going to be, you know, we're not going to be back at the township. Uh, with any of those issues, are they?
I don't think so, I mean, it depends on who it is. We don't have ALS, BLS agreeing with Bushville, we have ALS, BLS with just about everyone else in there. Is that, is that what you're asking me, I don't know what you're asking me?
Yeah, exactly.
So if anybody missed that or. If there's an ALS call up here and we get called in. To jump on their BLS truck. They bill for the BLS, we bill for the ALS, but we can only bill the patient. So they bill Medicare, we bill the patient. I'm sure you've had some of those complaints, we know that Lynn Regsman or Brown had this. Area's house, she was getting complaints because they don't even get them all the time.
Hmm.
Um, but there's nothing we can do, but we weren't getting reimbursed for our share.
Let me do the same.
Yeah, right. This is, we have to, Jack, obviously we're not going to be able to do these tendencies, but I think. We're all, and I had a lot of conversations about this, I appreciate you coming to take this.
Thank you very much.
Community, happy this is perfect. Yeah, yeah, all right, cool.
You know, we're always, we're going to be here just like we always have been. If you don't want this, this solution that we came up with. We're still going to be asking for something for the one third, we don't have that number.
Sure.
Done, calculated, it's coming out soon. Um, but if the one third here we do cover, who are we going to be asking, we're going to be asking all, we've visited all the communities. In Monroe except for the one that they were getting. Um, and told them that this is probably coming out later this year and, and now or at the time because I'm. I'm sure just like everyone else, you do budget, I'm kind of sorry, I'm a labor day project. Yeah.
Exactly.
And we appreciate it, um, thank you and we're always available for questions, uh, if you have.
For one supervisor's concern, I appreciate it.
Not for much longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More EMS, one, uh, Lucas, you made a recommendation that we continue our emergency contributions to Bushville. Do you want to summarize that quickly before we, instead of that again?
Sure, uh, so, uh, Bushville EMS asked, uh, Smithfield Township, Smithfield Township and Breck Township. Uh, starting in June for emergency, emergency contributions, we would help, uh, to theme them and, and make sure they are even used in new operating. Um, yeah, or, or if not operating. So when we have them do a session, they, they, they send a letter, um, to the townships, um, I had developed a, a split. Um, plus that eleven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars per, per month. Uh, at, at the time, uh, Middle Smithfield Township and Breck Township, Breck Township is thirty-six hundred and Middle Smithfield Township, uh, I remember off the top of my head. The other twenty-two thousand or something, um. And, uh, Middle Smithfield and, and Breck, I mean, some contributions, they have not made to the state that I'm aware. Uh, all their monthly contributions used in Bushville give up. But, um, I have received all financial data that I have requested from Bushville and, and continuing to recommend. To ensure that you're not, you know, go out of business, uh, at the time, or, you know, meeting providers for, for you that there's the, um, recommending you, you need that all.
Prove the, uh, emergency contributions to Bushville and Emmens for the next month.
Goodness, eleven nine second.
A second motion, yes.
All right, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I would like to make a comment to this. Um, all of this is outside of the budget that we have for. Uh, the urgency ambulance services for this year, it's really becoming a crisis as we can see with both of the services. Uh, the expenses are just going up at a, a rate that we never anticipated. Uh, just to give you an idea of what this, put it in perspective. If we were giving eleven thousand dollars a month, um, over ten months, it's over a hundred thousand dollars, well. Costs us a hundred thousand dollars to pave a mile of roadway, not, not our big roads, but our lanes that people live on. The township, so at some point, something's got to give, either we have ambulance service or we have roads, but. It's, it's becoming a very critical situation for us and I think for, uh, township. Even, uh, Middle Smithville is here because they're having to suffer. As we promised.
Yeah, regardless, I think all municipalities are starting to step up more in terms of funding, but. You know, that step up is really thirty years behind.
I think you're right.
And, you know, the county is in, uh, in antiquity.
You can't, the county commissioners, as far as I'm concerned, are three monkeys sitting there hearing nothing, seeing nothing and wanting to be. Wanting to be, uh, involved in nothing and, uh, uh, something has got to give there too. You know, I, I, we didn't allow these people to sit there and tell us that it's our problem.
May, may I say one more thing, I'm sure that Debbie, I know that we go after every grant we can get.
Sure.
Um, I'm sure she does too, it, it's, it's, it became a necessity. You know, seventy years ago, when I took over, I saw we weren't really pushing as hard as that should. It, there's no choice now, we, it's the only way we're getting ambulances right now. Is with the, with the gambling grants and even the other grants that we get.
And it's the same for us, I think grants originally were sort of cool innovative things, now therefore a necessity. You know, and that's what's terrible.
First, first I'll say thank you. And then I'll say, just for your record, according to the, uh. Commissioners and Justin was there and Donnie and Tim were there, Brian was there too. And I think he may have been there, but I don't remember.
Yeah.
Uh, their words were, when the township gives some funding. Then we'll be happy to step in and start giving some funding, so. Perhaps this is where the pressure comes from, but nonetheless. We all are, uh, we're all in the same boat, as I said earlier, yeah.
Here he has an interesting comment coming from the county commissioners who, when the townships. Provided funding to the fire departments, the radio. And the county commissioners agreed upon their third, are now squeezing every fire department. And, and decreasing the amount that they will provide. So this is volunteer environment, this is volunteer EMS, what have you, the county comes up with. And Robert, I wish I had a vote of what you said, but, I mean, the county comes up with every excuse they can.
That's what you have when you have a hack for a chief clerk.
But that, uh, Atkinson.
I won't call the monkeys, but.
Chief clerk said I. I call the monkeys, when Ed Atkinson went to the county commissioners asking if they join us in our study of firing EMS. Uh, to, to just get a sense of what the expenses are and what the objectives are, yeah, to us, no.
Right.
That's why I asked for it to be on the record. Since that's what they said in front of all of us.
I think there's a lot of, a lot of changes needed there, but, uh. Regardless, we have to do our job because ultimately. Even though the rules they come from very top, it's those of us very bottom that have to enforce them, so. It's going to be an interesting conversation going forward. But certainly optimistic. Um, all right, now, I think that beats that horse three more times, um. Next is consideration to appoint, uh, voting an alternate voting delegates to the Monroe County Association of Township officials. I think in keeping with what we have for COG, just for simplicity sake. I'd like to consider a motion to appoint Robert as the delegate and then, uh, have Julia and Lucas as the, uh, alternates.
What do I have to do?
It's going to be with some other people, uh, more needs. Yeah, we got to step up. Yeah, yeah, we gotta step up a ton. Um but uh, yeah, seriously, it was great. I got to go in my capacity with Brad Madden and Julia. Went as our uh delegate. I think it makes sense that Julia and Lucas is alternates so they can step in in the event that uh. You can't, that you just can't bear another meeting that's so fun and whatnot that you should be called down in edos or something. Um so.
We'll make a really long deal that's further just that. All being played.
Alright, uh everybody here, relation to the uh.
Lady voting.
Relation to the brother, I'm second by myself. Any questions? Paul and Taylor.
Aye.
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 Yes, there's something else that's really exciting, nine one fifty seven updates.
Uh we're almost done with ours. The only thing uh that's left, John, I think, coming out of state is. Whether or not to change what we currently have for ponds and or ponds and whatnot. I think we've already made a decision on who's gonna hear waivers. Yes, the other, the other thing.
Well, the other, the other thing uh that I don't know that I heard a definitive answer on was whether or not you want to. Uh. Include that maintenance fund from inspections and that.
Oh, yeah, I think we did it. Uh our last meeting.
People at me to do so.
Was it?
Well, the last uh thing that needs to be discussed is whether you want to maintain the fifty foot inner barriers. Your student buffers.
Yeah.
Uh between license fund or if you want to increase to the hundred fifty foot that is subjected by the MS.
I'm fine with what we currently have, you know, we haven't set the standard without. Imposing that extra burden and then with the fund, we'll be able to maintain any of these issues, right? I think it's a clear cut.
Again, it's your choice. Uh you have to bear in mind simply that if you increase the buffers. You inadvertently impose restrictions on a neighbor's property that isn't even going through.
Well, I think we should preserve buffers that we have.
And then everything is status quo, looks like.
Yeah, fifty, fifty. Yeah, I mean, as you can see, I mean, it is, despite the ordinance being so lengthy, there's really not a ton of change except for um the science and then a couple of. Other definitions that I think we had already discussed.
But I think those three items are some really technical standards.
Yeah.
Which I do support.
Yeah, and I I think we're ready to move on and get that finalized so we can advertise that. And we can find out what what the people are saying.
I think for everyone's.
Alright, we had a session, it's this, okay, that would be right, or, I like, um, where we had everyone, you were there.
Yes.
And uh I never acted after that in any of my, with any asthma, so. I assume this will be fine. Robert, does that sound? Good to hear your name. Alright, cool. Next, the certain budget meeting days. I think we, last year we started off over sixteen, I think, given the weight and all things that we had and probably be more prudent to start. Um early, um I mean, we have a number related to firing EMS. I was thinking. Potentially. I don't know, mid September, mid, late September?
But leaving at least October, first week in October.
I think we could have one session in.
October, yeah.
Uh, if I may, uh Lucas and I had discussed this and we very kindly asked you. Uh in in the interest of our sanity to avoid the dates that you are using meetings for. Last year we did budget meetings in the morning and regular things in the.
Yeah, I agree with your explanation.
And we could shift that, so it's an all week, uh just to help even out our workload.
Yes, on the first or third Wednesday potentially.
Yes.
Yeah, first and third.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, I think, during the early, maybe fourth, and then probably might be better, but we could run just. Uh a really, perhaps, you know, probably a bit, like three weeks before that, you know, just a general updated meeting. If that's okay. That very soon will be done, is at ten AM. Um because that's when our professionals are also available, you know, this year, I think we're gonna be pretty knowledgeable to do the control and all. Uh they're not going to be there, so we're going to save that that expense we will need any longer. Um but our refrigerator, you know, is still going to be for a good portion of these. Um, I mean, I was wondering, it's not like earlier in the morning than ten AM, just because ten AM is kind of another time.
You don't take your kid to school.
I don't take a kid to school, right?
I'd I'd say ten.
Ten, alright. I mean, I can make a little ten. I'd like to keep them each to the two hours of that, if we can, I mean, I think.
Yeah, I think, you know, ten and then that's it.
Yeah.
Other option, I want to do that.
Same, how many uh, whether or not Lucas, do you think?
So then, just to confirm for the good order.
Yeah.
We're looking at Wednesday, October fourth at ten AM.
Yeah.
Wednesday, October eighteenth at ten AM.
Yeah.
Wednesday, November first at ten AM, and then the fourth one, if we need it, which we. As the sort of we advertised for and then canceled if it's not necessary. Uh will be Wednesday, November fifteenth there, right?
Yeah, that would, that would be fine with me. And I I think we've been more efficient the last few, certainly than. What I can remember before that. So. That's uh, okay. Robert, you good with you?
Yeah.
Alright.
It's okay with me.
Okay, alright, so we'll have it prepared and then that'll be the next build pack. Alright, next board of supervisors report, D one one. On either. Or have any of them want to say?
No.
No, okay, alright, perfect. That's great. Um I think that uh. I have the same opinion there. Uh next item up is our build pack, which uh is all from the general fund that. Includes one payroll, it's a hundred ninety seven thousand two hundred sixty five dollars and fifty cents. And. Everything that's standard, you know, engineering, legal and uh utilities, there's nothing. Out of the ordinary, no construction or anything in there. So do I hear a motion to pay the bill?
Motion to pay the bills.
Question, minus eleven, I'm second by myself. Any question?
How's second motion?
You all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any public comments? Ken?
Um. Is there any update on the activities that was going on at the Order App Loan Center?
Uh I have not heard from us right now, certainly not.
We've had, we still hope and we still.
Yeah, as far as I know, it's still an active investigation, so.
Yeah.
Uh I've.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know what's the delay.
And they, and and that fixed that area, Jerry, I read, looks good, they car uh, hardship is out, I'm sure.
Bye, Eric.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else?
I've got some good news, if I can, oh, sorry.
I don't know if this would be under new business, but I wanted to ask about some property that I purchased and run by Birch Acres. So on a, I don't know if I should wait or, I've never been to a township meeting.
Uh, welcome.
Yeah, should I go up there and, and show you?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, I I think I emailed you earlier, it's Joe Whitmer. Now, I'm just kinda asking for a little bit of feedback, I think. I purchased some land over here on uh, it's uh Charles Street, go back to Birch Acres. It's only half an acre and uh. My situation is, is it's commercial property, you know, I have everything in writing, it's commercial property, the highway occupancy is there. And my situation is I have, I'm I'm a small company, I got like five employees. And I got like five or six trucks. I usually use one, I'm a shy, I have a few business. I usually use one truck for backup in case someone goes.
Sure.
Now, my situation is uh, I have a pound thing, I purchased a residential. So I purchased a commercial property over here on Charles Street, open it up in part with my trucks there. Now, uh Ken Wolf was telling me that I had to have a building on here and, and you know, and the land built. He was saying I had to have to have a building on there, or a building on there, so that would just, instead of sewer and whatever. Now, I took that and I said, man, I'm I'm in trouble. I I gotta build my trucks in. And and so what I did was I went down, R K has snake border. Anybody knows, he's an local guy, and he was on vacation, but he came back and went down and. But uh he started working this plan out. So I told, so he's working a plan out of Van Belk playing for that, which is, you know, it's already uh, I had people working here. When I bought this, I bought it up, uh Rick Gold. Now, there's a, it's a pretty narrow track there, so they had it nineteen ninety one. He had a sort of, it was on that we could go off to different setbacks, like I think it's sixty feet. From the road, but he had it, you know, done here on ninety one, that I could, he could put a building there. So it was, I guess it would be needed in there or whatever. So going off of that. And all this, I don't know, there and I, you know, I tried to flatten the land out, but I'm in this predicament of uh. Getting my trucks here. Now, I told, I was, I didn't tell him nothing, but I explained to uh Ken there that I can show progress with putting that building in. I just need to get my trucks over there. I can show progress, I already talked to Terry about the sewage that goes down on Charles Street. You know, I can hope that I can get onto that, I can get on a building. And I can get on, apparently, the water and sewage is up. At the intersection up there, so that's not, I gotta get a well to hold in there. So uh most likely, the bodies is going, they're telling me it's, well, commercial, yeah, it's commercial property. Yeah, I got it in here, if you wanna look at it.
Yeah, it's a lead, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's me, you, is that what you said, immediately? Yeah, she said I can hook that up. Yeah, she said I can hook up to, but my my problem was before I purchased it, man, I wanted, I needed to know where it was at. So what's it, but apparently it's very across from uh the rental place there. See, I see where they cut through the road and go through there. So my thing is, you know, I just have to have a place to park my trucks. Long, long, you know, I can show you guys the progress, me putting, you know, the. The sewer in, I can jump right on that. You know, the building, you know, it's gonna take a little time for the pole building. I I'm having to place another pole building erected over in Strath Township. But that that's my situation.
If it's, if it's a E zone, I don't know what the problem.
Basically, so basically, if I understand it correctly, you you. According to our ordinance, you can't just park vehicles on the property.
Even if it's conversion? That's what I was starting with.
Right.
I mean, I, that's what I was thinking, I was like, it's commercial, I can. Park your truck there, that was my case in Strath Township, I got it where I'm at all here, I mean. Uh which, it's not like I got so many trucks, you know, and I probably got like six trucks. The highway occupancy was permitted, actually, Pendot, from the guard, you know, they're not all the property, I was in process, buying, they put a guardrail right through there. But it's what we called Pendot up, and they actually, you know, put their, put it back in here, so they put the new curb, you know, thing.
So it's in your trucking business?
No, no, I'm in the tree business, tree business, so, yeah, I cut trees from the window.
Well, that must be a, a.
That's why I look like this, I was taking, I was taking trees all past, but I don't, they're not there. All day.
Well, we can talk to to Ken and I think, is your phone number or email that you sent to Julia?
I think so. Z Y, it's weird one.
Yeah, I will, I will start here and come in and uh, in the interest of not telling the world, there's gonna be a shit. There's a lot of areas, I mean, probably not these guys. You can totally be older and going, you can, you can have there, so I'm sure this is something.
Yeah, I mean, I I can definitely show progress and put a building there. Actually, it's, you know, I got everything here, you know, the oxygen, the road permit, the uh. The bearings from where they put the building in.
Yeah.
Cause they had to do it, cause it's such a, it's it's a trying and a shooting. So they had to set it back, instead of sixty from the road, forty, and you gotta pay for it. And I think like ten feet off the back property. When I talked to the. I talked to the uh, my neighbor there, his name, well, name is Frank, I'm Mr. Boling, and he's okay with basically anything I do there. And my, my property's had, right on the border, I made some things where like.
To me, it either should be permitted or there's a work around it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, like I said, I was, I got to the twenty fifth.
Yeah.
To get out of there. And I can definitely show progress of, you know, making that place look nicer.
You got the twenty fifth for?
That'll be smart, get my trucks.
Oh, construct, okay.
But I definitely, you know, I was gonna, I'll I'll, I'll definitely, if you go over there, if you go over there, you can see the improvement, I mean, I've. I took all the trees out, cleaned it up. He had dead trees, dead trees all over the place, it was a mess, I planted it out. I talked to Dave Lucy Candish, he was a one of our cabinet council.
Yeah.
Instead of the tundra maker, I can plant this land out, we're not gonna, any, so I put up the silk fence around it before I did all that. So, I mean, I'm just hoping for a place to park my trucks and to move forward.
That was, yeah. Now, that's, he was owning one, and I'm always surprised too, if they can't just put a crossbar, but I think you could, but I. I don't have a twenty one, twenty five, so.
Yeah, but he was saying like, he was, he was kinda, you know, I don't wanna throw him under the bus, but, you know, because he was like. He was like, at first, when I bought the property, he was like, hey, I said, I just, you know, I wanna, I wanna move my trucks in. And and park my trucks, and it was like, it was like seeming like it was okay, yeah, and then all of a sudden, like. After I bought, purchased the property, and it seems like, oh, well, we just can't park your trucks on a big apartment now. Now, maybe I did state my rights self, you know, correctly, when I was solving to like, okay, that plan, I put the building here, I plan on.
One of those will talk, yeah.
Well, we'll kind of, we'll, we'll get all your info, huh?
I mean, I'm an asset. I I'll be, I I'll afford a laser down river and give it out, on my way, brother.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I am not, you know, I have like twenty, thirty, forty, I got six guys. I'll be going in the morning, parking cars, going out with trucks, going to the open road, but I always do, come down, park the trucks, so, then.
Yeah.
Well, this is another, definitely, so we got.
Yeah, so, will you go contact me through the email or?
Email or phone problem. Definitely, one of the three of us will definitely contact you and we'll make sure that we facilitate you that that.
Yeah, and as far as like, he was like, it was, it was okay. As long as nobody complained. Uh I don't know what that's all about, like maybe the major or something, the community or. That's why I wanted to do this, I was like, I was like, I was impressed.
Yeah.
Third team out, it's sort of financial, so everybody.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah, we'll figure this out, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So I'll just say from you guys, I mean, yeah, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Hey, thanks for coming.
Yeah, it's fine, right? I wonder how about the ambulance?
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I I don't know if, if, um, if you send this out to your residents or not, but um. You might wanna send out, I noticed that. Over Water Gap, we had, I don't know, half dozen cars drove into. I don't know if they're heading this way or not.
Alright.
Like, I don't. I'm, I'm answering, I can't say we're coming to, but they'll lock it, but, but just a heads up. I think they're just looking for change and and stuff that they can put in their pockets, cause I had stuff in the back of my truck and that was over there, so. But just a heads up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, maybe you don't, you swear it off, like I said, but, yeah. Uh oh, we'll reach out to uh the police and we'll uh, that's interesting, yeah, cool.
I want a motion to adjourn.
Sure, that would be a good one. I'm second, uh, hey, aye.
Aye.